To order the Wheat Ridge City Council meeting of September 12, 2011, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Karen Adams.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Juan Desang.
Here.
And Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
And let the record show, Karen Berry is absent.
Third motion to approve the minutes of August 22, 2011.
So moved.
Have a motion for approval was seconded by Councilman Reinhardt. Any changes to the minutes tonight? Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
I thank you. We have one presentation tonight. I'd like to ask Tom Kurgan from Kaiser to please step forward and Kriya Kelly, Race Director from the Colfax Marathon. Hope I said your name right. Kriya?
Yeah, Kriya will work.
And Jean Oliver, Public Information Officer from Jefferson Center for Mental Health. Thank you for coming. In the spring of this year, the mayor's office and the city council sponsored a team for the Colfax Marathon, a municipal team, and we were, those members, by the way, was Patrick Goff, our city manager. We had Jerry Doll, our city attorney, Sarah DeTulio, the former high school student, and Betsy Saylor is in the police department, and also Davis Reinhardt from city council. They placed and we were able to receive an award of $1,500. That $1,500 goes to a health organization of our choice, so tonight, this year, we decided to give it to the Jefferson Center for Mental Health. So I wanted to have them come forward and make the presentation and who wants to step forward for, oh, we have a check, that's right, we have a big check.
You get the check.
Yeah, you just do the check. It's your check.
It's our check. So I'd like to present a $1,500 check to the Jefferson Center for Mental Health. The Jefferson Center for Mental Health is actually in Wheat Ridge. They're at 48th and Independence. They have about 200 employees. They also have a satellite organization, the Summit Center at 38th and Pierce. So I'd like to present this check to Jeanie Oliver. Congratulations and congratulations to our relay team. This is second year. They want to get a photo here.
I'll just stand my tiptoes for this.
On behalf of Jefferson Center for Mental Health Board, staff, and in particular the 19,000 clients that we serve every year from this community, thank you very much. This money will help, I should be looking at the mayor and the council here, this money will help pay for care for people who cannot otherwise afford it. So thank you very much. We're thrilled and we're happy to be a part of this community. Thank you.
Kaiser Permanente supports a lot of things as a nonprofit health plan that are public health related. We also do some sponsorships like this and we really like the Colfax Marathon because it gave us an opportunity, gives us an opportunity, we've been doing it for three years now, to do this municipal cup where we can link up with municipalities and really do things like this where we encourage employees of municipalities to get involved, get moving more, and have some fun. And so we love this event. We love the activity that brings to all across our community and these are the fun things that I get to do as part of my job as the community benefit person. So thank you.
I just want to add, again, I serve as the race director. I serve it his pleasure. And one of the wonderful things, I get to travel around the country and work with Kaiser by chance sometimes at other events as their event announcer or as an event manager. And one of the things that I've discovered is that this program, this charitable component to this event, is unique. We serve some 73-plus charities within this event and then this part of the event makes it one of the most unique charitable giving programs within the running community in the world. Nobody else does this. Nobody else gives money freely to other charities and allows you to select the charity. So God bless you for being on that team, but I would suggest to you, on a going-forward basis, on the 20th of May of 2012, third place is good, first is best. All right? Good luck to you.
And thanks again to our relay team that we had this year. It was a great group of folks. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is for anybody who wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight, so please step forward to the podium. You can form a line along the wall. Please spell your last name for the record and give us your address or your city. And please spell your last name for the record and give us your address or your city.
I can do that. Cecile. Hello? I'm Tracy Gilner. I live at 10410 West 47th Place. My last name is spelled G-U-I-L-D-N-E-R. Good evening. My name is Tracy and I'm running for city council District Four. I'm a fourth generation and a native and have managed and owned a local business in District Four for 25 years with my mother and my family. I'm currently serving on the planning commission. Wheat Ridge is at a cross, I am nervous, sorry. Wheat Ridge is at a crossroad. We need to keep moving forward as a city. When elected, my focuses will be to listen and to support projects and programs that will benefit residents and business communities. Everyone brings a unique perspective to the table. My commitment to the taxpayers is that I will not oppose an idea simply because of the person bringing the idea forward. Elected officials need to know, need to listen to each other and not just talk to each other. I'm always learning as a business owner and have learned much serving on the planning commission. It is time for me to bring my background and experience forward to further service you, to serve you, not service you. Sorry. My name is Tracy Gilner and I ask for your vote this November. Please call me at 720-297-0123 if you have any questions and have a great evening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Should I say my name?
Oh, go ahead, please. Go ahead and say your name and spell your last name for the record and give us your address.
Autumn Earhart, E-H-R-H-A-R-D-T, 9505 West 32nd Avenue, Wheat Ridge, Colorado 80033. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Autumn Earhart and this is Abby Espinson. We are here to speak to you for the interests of the Wheat Ridge High School Theater. We would like to garner support from the community leaders and business professionals to help the Wheat Ridge High School Theater. To be frank, we want to fill the seats this year for our fall play. This year, we have an adaptation of Lewis Carroll's The Adventures of Alice in Wonderland, actually written and adapted by a past student, so a wonderful opportunity. There are so many young stars right next door that would love more attention from the community at large. Teenagers, they want attention and they'd like some more of it. So to publicize this year's fall play, we have the past five years plays that will be showcased on the lovely Channel Eight. This will help promote our play and showcase the theatrical talent and quality programming at Wheat Ridge High School. We have brought flowers that will leave on the back table that will show how to be a Wheat Ridge High School Theater angel. Please be an angel this year by advertising on our program, coming to our play on December 1st through 3rd, or donating money. We'll leave the flyers on the table and thank you so much for giving us time to speak to you about how wonderful high school theater can be and hopefully have you come on down to the door of the farm and join us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Autumn, could you state the date again, please?
It's December 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, and tickets are $9, so we'd love to see you there and welcome you to our wonderful community and theatrical home.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dick Matthews and that's spelled M-A-T-T-H-E-W-S and I live at 10405 West 34th Place and I am a candidate for Wheat Ridge City Treasurer, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight to talk about the pro cycling challenge that came through Wheat Ridge on August 27th. And I mean that by it came through. It didn't showcase the city all that well. I walked up to watch at about the corner of 32nd and Kipling with a few hundred of my other neighbors and we had no opportunity to buy a soft drink or a snow cone or anything up there. That really could have been exploited much better. And what I would like to do is encourage you, if that should come through town next year, to exploit it and actually root it through some commercial areas. That got national and international coverage and, you know, it was, the city of Denver could see fit to make sure that they had banners displayed during that route. The city of Golden could have banners displayed and I would like to see Wheat Ridge exploit that next year if possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council, neighbors and friends. My name is Monica Duran, D-U-R-A-N. I'm at 2980 Uppam Street in Wheat Ridge, 80033. I'm here this evening to announce my candidacy for city council for District One. Through the process, I've made a lot of new friends, met a lot of neighbors along the way that I hadn't met in years and I want to thank you. All you guys have really big hearts for giving me your support, getting my petition signed to get here. I humbly ask for your continued support as I continue on my mission and I hope to bring you fresh ideas and a commitment to all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maureen Keller, K-E-L-L-E-R, and I'm just here to introduce myself. I'm running for city clerk. I'm a retired journalist, 30 years, and I covered city hall in San Diego redevelopment and I was also a managing editor, so I know how to organize and I'm detail oriented. And I just wanted to introduce myself and hope that you vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We've never had so much clapping under public comment before, so that's a good thing. Do we have anybody else here for public comment before we move on to the agenda? Seeing none. Move on to public hearings and ordinances on second reading. The purpose of second, is there any changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing none. Move on to public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Council Bill 25-2011, I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilman Reinhardt?
I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 25-2011, an ordinance approving a planned commercial development, specific outline development plan on the property located at 7495 West 29th Avenue, case number WZ1104MNCPN. The applicant is requesting the approval of an amendment to the planned commercial developments, specific outline development plan for the property located at 7495 West 29th Avenue for the construction of a medical clinic. This case is being processed as a specific outline development plan, ODP, which establishes the development standards as well as preliminary site planning for the property and architecture for the structure. If approved, the applicant can proceed to administrative final development plan, platting and building permit. The planning commission recommended approval of this requested public hearing held on July 21. Adoption of Council Bill on first reading set for public hearing to be considered tonight. The property was rezoned, as prior actions, the property was rezoned from R2 to planned commercial development or case number WZO5-10. The approved ODP document was heavily conditioned with items pertaining to use, areas, and maintenance of then existing structures. A subsequent ODP for construction of a restaurant, retail, and office was approved subject to case number WZ0801 but was never built. The applicant, the Metro Community Providers Network, is requesting approval of a specific outline development plan for approximately 46,000 square foot medical clinics so they can proceed to an administrative FDP and platting process. The planning commission reviewed this request at a public hearing held on July 21 and recommended approval with the following conditions. Problems with a legal description needed to be resolved. The applicant continues working with public works resolved drainage design and proposed materials and colors to be specified on the architectural elevations. A graphic be shown to show the sidewalk detail of the detached walk and the elimination of the 38th Avenue connection into the residential neighborhood behind, and I think that's good background for it.
Will the city clerk, please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 25-2011 will be assigned ordinance number 1499.
Thank you. If you're here tonight from the public or from staff, please stand to raise your right hand if you're going to speak on this agenda item. Please stand now. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Thank you. We'll move on to the staff presentation first and then we'll go on to applicant and public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Ken Johnstone, Community Development Director, and thanks for that introduction, Mr. Reinhardt. It's a good summary of the case. We are pleased to be in front of you this evening with a planned commercial rezoning application for property just across the street, 7495 West 29th Avenue, just the other side of 29th from where we're sitting this evening. I will have a brief presentation that orientates to the site and gives you a little summary of the development application and then the applicant will have a presentation as well. Just in terms of orientation, north-south, Wadsworth Boulevard, 29th on the south end of the site, and 30th extends to right about here and then that's Webster. We'll talk a fair amount about access, which was one of the issues that was of discussion during the planning commission hearing during my presentation here. As you can see, the zoning for the site is already PCD, Planned Commercial District. There's been a series of zoning actions on the property over the past, oh, five or 10 years, zoning it from previously a residential designation, which is what the surrounding properties are, to its current planned commercial designation, which is being amended this This is the previous approval that was approved back in 2008. It was an outline development plan for really a retail development. There was one end user that was known and that would have been a proposed restaurant that would have been on this end of the site. That would be the north end of the site. And the other retail users were really speculative. They weren't specifically known, but they did receive approval for this specific outline development plan, but never moved forward with construction of that plan as the restaurant did pull out. This is the cover sheet of the new development plan, really. This is the cover page and really lays out what the permitted uses are, what the development standards are, owner certifications, city council certifications, et cetera. You can probably see this better on the screen in front of you, but probably challenging for the audience to see, but essentially what this is, is a summary of our review of the application relative to the development standards. Some of those development standards come from the municipal code such as parking and some are specifically tailored on the development plan itself and just our way of showing that the sign, excuse me, the development that's being proposed specifically for Metro Community Providers Network is in full compliance with municipal code as it applies to the site and with the overlying zoning as it applies to the site as well. This is the proposed development plan. I think there may be a little better version of this, a little darker version, in the applicant's presentation, so I won't spend too much time on this, but you can see that the building is generally oriented towards the, to the southwest corner of the site in this location and generally, you know, a fair amount of parking for this type of a medical office use. They typically do have a fairly high parking demand. There is access onto 29th Avenue, which would align with access into city hall, and then there is additional access off of Wadsworth at this end of the site into the parking lot as well. The next slide will hopefully show you this a little bit better, but a zoomed-in view of the access in this location. Going into the planning commission public hearing a couple of weeks back, there was a street connection. We have, part of the right-of-way has already been platted for 30th Avenue to extend across this property. The initial application and in working with staff had proposed to extend out that public right-of-way to make a connection into the neighborhood. As councils are aware, the desire to create a more pedestrian family and street connectivity is certainly a goal of the city in general, which was really the reason that we had come forward to that planning commission hearing with that recommendation to extend the street connectivity. Having said that, the connectivity from the neighbors' perspective that live in that area was a significant concern. Planning commission was sensitive to that concern and ultimately recommended that the access not be a through connection to, from Wadsworth to West 30th Avenue into the neighborhood, but that the access just serve as this development. So based on that recommendation from the planning commission, we worked with the applicant to reconfigure the access such that it does provide just a typical drive connection onto Wadsworth Boulevard and that access configuration has been approved by CDOT as well. We do still have a sidewalk connection that would be constructed by the applicant across the existing right-of-way so that there is an ability for the neighborhood to get out to Wadsworth Boulevard and we think that's certainly a benefit given the investment that's being made right now in terms of the enhanced pedestrian connections on Wadsworth and of course, a sidewalk will be constructed across Wadsworth as part of this development as well. Again, I'm trying to give you a better understanding of just that physical connection, the shaded colors that are kind of in a pink color. This is the plan that went to the planning commission. You can see that they had that street connection and then the connection to Webster and then they would have taken their access like that. That's been changed. That's no longer part of the proposal. The graphic on the right shows that the colored areas are the site access, the circulation where vehicles would be traveling and there's a break there. So you can see the existing Webster and 30th would remain in place. Their site improvements would occur right here, but there is not a connection into the neighborhood there in compliance with the planning commission condition. Again, the applicant will have some graphics as well. We're pleased with how the architecture of the building has turned out. We think it's a high-quality project and will be a visual enhancement to the corner and certainly are pleased with the proposed medical office use as well, just in terms of the jobs and the services that brings to the community. It is a two and three-story building, generally a two-story building, but just a portion based on the grade becomes effectively a kind of a garden level on the south and east sides of the building. And one other graphic here, too. The project has been reviewed for compliance architecturally with the city's Architectural and Site Design Manual and that includes, you know, extensive requirements regarding materials and the amount of window glazing and the amount of basically interest or articulation that's provided on the building. We certainly believe it's in full compliance with those standards. In terms of the zoning for the property relative to our comprehensive planning efforts, we have done two comprehensive plans that apply to the property in the recent past. 2007, we adopted the Wadsworth Corridor Sub area plan and in 2010, we adopted the citywide comprehensive plan envisioned Wheat Ridge. In the Wadsworth Corridor Plan, the property was developed, was designated as a commercial piece and in the 2010 envisioned Wheat Ridge Plan, it was kind of right on the edge from being that primary commercial corridor, but then also a neighborhood buffer area. And what that neighborhood buffer area is, is really intended to be lower intensity commercial uses, but certainly commercial uses are appropriate, so we do believe it's fully compliant with both of those comprehensive planning documents. Has been out on a standard agency referral process. The various districts that need to serve the property are able to do that. CDOT supports the application. We do support it from an economic development, as I mentioned, long-range planning perspective. The only outstanding issue, and I think it's really just a matter of working on the details and we're just not to that point yet, is just the, Public Works will need to continue to review the final drainage documents, which aren't something that typically gets finalized through this ODP, through this outline development plan process. So just a detail to track, not an issue that we believe is a concern. The zone change criteria are certainly an important part of this review process and we've provided analysis of that in the packet of information that you received. We certainly believe that the site is really a good use of the site from an office perspective that I think it's always struggled as a retail site, just because there's not a lot of synergy with other retail on the site. So we believe that's really a market reality and a change condition that's occurred. As I mentioned, consistent with our long-range planning documents, we do believe it's compatible with the neighborhood, with the fencing and landscaping that'll buffer the parking lot and the medical office use, which is, you know, typically somewhat less intensive than other retail commercial uses that would be more auto-oriented or would have longer hours of operation, that sort of thing. Again, as I mentioned, it is also consistent with the Architectural and Site Design Manual. Planning commission held the public hearing back on July 21st. They did recommend approval. The conditions are listed there. I think obviously the biggest one is really that redesign of 30th Avenue so that it wouldn't connect out to Wadsworth into Webster into the neighborhood. I've already talked about that. The other conditions, with the exception of the condition from Public Works on finalizing the drainage plan, is the only one that remains and that is our recommendation, is that you conduct a public hearing and recommend approval of the ordinance with just the one condition pertaining to the drainage design. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. We'll move on to the applicant. Please step forward if you have any additional items to present to the city council. Please spell your last name for the record and give us your address and your company or city.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is David Myers, M-Y-E-R-S. My address is 3701 South Broadway, Inglewood, Colorado 80113. And I would also like to introduce Dr. Barry Martin, our Vice President of Clinical Affairs, who is joining me up here at the podium. It is a great honor to be here to talk about this project. My organization, Metro Community Provider Network, we are known as MCPN and call ourselves that, so we hope you do as well. We have been in business for 22 years, very, very successfully, starting from a one clinic in Aurora to now a system of healthcare serving at 11 locations, six of those locations here in Jefferson County. Even though we serve 7% to 8% of the citizens of Wheat Ridge, we are their doctor's office. We currently don't have a presence in Wheat Ridge and so are exciting about this, are excited about this opportunity to build this campus. Indeed, we're looking at it as a campus and when we get into the design and the architecture, we hope it will be an addition to the Wheat Ridge vision and what can be offered. As a doctor's office, what we offer is everything that your doctor's office offers, but I would hope that we do it even a little better, that we offer dental services, supportive services, case management. This facility will house 15 medical providers and seven dental providers plus all the support staff that goes along with those programs. Certainly happy to talk about any specifics of what we offer, but again, it is a family medicine, a family practice, probably most exciting for the community. We also look at addressing some of the issues around seniors' care for the community and bringing some of those services as well. bringing some of those services as well, and always in coordination and collaboration with our community partners, Jefferson Center for Mental Health. Congratulations on your award tonight, but also with Senior Resources, Inc., and everybody else. Also, I would like to add how, and I hope we have shown ourselves to be a good neighbor, sensitive to the needs of the neighbors, sensitive to the needs of the city, sensitive to the needs of what the community is trying to accomplish, and as we move into the community, I hope we can continue to be perceived as a partner building Wheat Ridge. At this point, I would like to introduce Stacy Root from Boulder Associates, who will speak about the physical plant, design, and all the good stuff.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, please spell your last name for the record.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Stacy Root, that's R-O-O-T, and I'm at 1426 Pearl Street in Boulder, Colorado, 80302. And I'm the project architect for the project that MCPN is proposing. I'd like to just open up this other presentation really quickly. And some of these images are the same ones that we saw from Ken, but I just wanted to touch on a few of the, sort of, the things that we've been thinking about along the way. One of them is that, to start out, I think one of the reasons MCPN was drawn to the site was its sort of park-like quality. There are some really great trees on that site, and we intend to do everything that we can to preserve some of them. Most notably, there's a, there's kind of a rare American sycamore down here at that southwest corner, which we intend to keep, and also those two blue spruce that I'm sure you guys who work here, you're familiar with when you look right across the street. I think people associate those with the site and its history, and so we're happy to keep them and intend to do that. Let's see. We've also proposed to do a garden level where the site is currently dug out. That makes a lot of sense to us in terms of, you know, working with sensible grading. And we have adhered to the city's Build 2 requirements as far as pushing the building up to the corners of those streets, so the building would have a really hard presence on those corners, which has the added benefit, I think, of pulling the building away from the neighbors and offering them more privacy. So, that's one of the reasons that generated the site plan development.
Do you want to bring up the PowerPoint presentation as a slideshow?
Sure. Well, yeah.
Because that, I don't think anybody can really see that very well on the board. I know you're nervous, just relax. There you go.
All right, that's a little better. Oh, wait, now I need the arrows. There we go. Okay, and then, so this is just an aerial view showing the property from above, so you get a sense of how it sits on that site. And lastly, I'd like to close with just a couple of color images. This is a rendering looking to the south, to the southwest, toward the southwest, looking at the entrance of the project. So, as you can see, it's very glassy. That actually would be waiting rooms right inside there. There's, we propose a really nice canopy at the entrance, and then otherwise, the building materials we're looking at are a mixture of different CMU colors, different cement board, articulated cement board panels, as well as some stucco, and then a retaining wall that would have an architectural rail at the top of it, along with a fence, which was along the east side that the neighbors have been requesting all along, so. And then Ken showed these images. These are just the renderings that show the straight-on elevations that give you a sense of the articulation that we're proposing for the site. And that's all I have. So, I'd like also to mention that John Woollett, our landscape architect, is here, as is Dave Meyer, the civil engineer, and Alex Aronello, the traffic engineer, so if you have any questions, we're happy to help. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment, then if you have to come back up to answer any questions from the public, we'll have you do that. So we'll move on to public comment. Please step forward and line up along the wall for this agenda item number one. If you have any comments, questions. If you have a question, we'll take the question, then we'll come back around and answer questions at the end of public comment with our city staff and the applicant. So please spell your last name for the record.
Hello, I'm Ted Hyde, spelling of last name is H-E-Y-D, and my address is 917 South Cole, C-O-L-E Drive in Lakewood. The zip is 80228. And good evening, members of council and Mr. Mayor. I'd like to open this evening by thanking MCPN and Boulder Associates for their spirit of collaboration to date. Livwell Wheat Ridge fortunately reviewed the second-to-final site plan and submitted comments to Stacy Root at Boulder Associates, comments that promoted healthy design concepts, many of which are reflected on the site plan, specifically multimodal circulation to and from, adjacent uses for employees, clients, and other visitors. So, tonight, on behalf of Livwell Wheat Ridge, I'd like to offer some specific comments in support of this project. From a medical services standpoint, looking at MCPN across the street at 29th and Wadsworth, they would serve as an important safety net here in the Wheat Ridge community. Given their expertise, their track record, and really proven ability to serve clients with a wide range of needs, they're in a unique position as a service provider to address those needs of often the most underserved in the Wheat Ridge populace. Consideration of childhood obesity in the Wheat Ridge community helps really demonstrate that. Effectively addressing that requires environments that support safe and active lifestyles and increasing access to healthy foods. However, another key piece to that issue in the puzzle is ensuring that individuals and families here in the Wheat Ridge community have access to affordable healthcare. MCPN provides that full range of healthcare to insured, under, and in fact, uninsured individuals, which is why that Livwell Wheat Ridge is here tonight to support the proposal that is in front of you. In the larger geographic context, MCPN, as Dave mentioned, is really known for serving as a part of a robust region-wide partnership with communities, agencies, and other healthcare systems, really on a systematic approach in the west metro subregion here. So, assuming they do move in across the street, the medical services partnership throughout the west metro subregion here, Wheat Ridge included, would only be strengthened, so we see that as a real plus. Another key point, and this was mentioned, is that both in the short term and the long term, this project would create jobs, some for Wheat Ridge residents, which is, from the economic side, obviously, a plus. This is my own subjective opinion, but I think it would definitely result in an aesthetic improvement on this vacant section of the corridor and provide some very important infrastructure to the site, notably the 10-foot sidewalk that's proposed along the eastern frontage of the property. It'd be a very nice addition and accompaniment to the multi-use path that's now under construction in front of City Hall, so those two would link very well together. So, Livwell Wheat Ridge offers its support for the project and encourages council to please approve this ODP. And in closing, we lastly wanted to recognize and thank MCPN for becoming the newest member of Livwell Wheat Ridge's Leadership Committee, and we look forward to growing our partnership with you and to create resilient individuals, families, and neighborhoods here in Wheat Ridge. Thanks very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Louise Canjar, C-A-N-J-A-R. I live at 3055 Webster Street. I wasn't able to attend the July meeting before the Planning Commission, and so I was so pleased to find out tonight that 30th Avenue is not going to be put through, nor is Webster Street, so thank you, thank you, thank you, Planning Commission. My only question now is for the architect, is whether or not there's going to be a fence on the north side of the property.
Not on the north.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll ask all the questions, and then we'll come back around and answer them. So, you have any other questions, Luanne?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so you'll be up for that one publicly. Thank you, Luanne. Nice to put a face with the name finally. Do we have anybody else to speak on our public comment before we answer a few questions and move on to council action? Could MCPN or your signs, please step forward and answer the question about the fence, please?
So, we are not planning a fence on the north side of the property, just all along the full length of the east side?
That's it?
Thank you.
Were there other questions?
Well, we'll come around.
Okay.
So now we're going to move on to council discussion and questions. I'll start with, anybody on my right has any questions?
I just wanted to confirm that the roadway section meets the future Wadsworth Corridor Mark Westberg from Public Works. It does meet the future Wadsworth. It matches the 150-foot section that was chosen.
Ms. Adams?
Just a couple things for the record, and I believe it was in our packet, and I, it could have been when I listened to the Planning Commission. And one of the concerns of our community a lot of times is that we have so many open office buildings in the city already, and I think I would like some reiteration as to how this would not work, this particular campus setting would not work in some of the empty for lease office buildings, and I think that was addressed at the Planning Commission, too.
So, if I understand the question, what assurances are there that this will not become a vacant office building?
There you go.
Okay. Well, I think one of the, one of the answers is that we are using federal funds to build this, and the federal government won't let us vacate it. That's the, that really is the bottom-line answer. We are a community health center. As healthcare moves forward, whatever direction it moves forward, we will become even more viable and vibrant. The way that healthcare is changing says that healthcare for community health centers is going to be the wave of the future. This is witnessed by Congress allocating $11 billion for health centers for their construction and for their development, and so everybody is betting on us to succeed.
Perfect. Thanks for that clarification. I have a couple other things, Jerry. Also, as of right now, looking at your establishment over in Aurora, can you give us a ballpark of your hours of operation for the neighborhood, please?
We have three locations in Aurora. The location is, closest to this is our north Aurora facility. It currently is 8:00 to 5:00 on Monday through Friday. We are looking at extended hours, moving until 8:00 at night, and doing some Saturday hours.
Okay, and also, I think, I think everyone in the audience and at home knows that we do have particular lighting restrictions, and we'll abide by those for our neighbors also.
Well, Stacy says yes.
I'm sure, I know that we do. Okay, and then I guess the question got answered about the fence on the north side, and that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? Ms. Jay?
I believe I read in the packet that there are some green building allowances or plans other than saving the existing trees. Can you describe some of those?
Absolutely. So, I'm thrilled, just thrilled, that MCPN is targeting lead gold with this building. That is a very high measure of sustainability, and it includes things like energy usage, using local materials, the siding itself, and the list to actually achieve lead gold is pretty stringent, and it's going to be a tough challenge, but I'm thrilled that they're going for it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Wait, I just wanted to congratulate MCPN if you, if it passes tonight. You know, about a year and a half ago, they approached the city of Wheat Ridge. I know this has been a tough haul for the neighborhood, for our city staff, for city council, to find a use of that site. It's been cantankerous at some times, but I think this is a win-win situation, and hopefully this will pass tonight. It'll benefit the neighborhood, it'll benefit the city, and it'll benefit the local area. So I want to congratulate everybody for the work, and city staff, for working with the neighborhood and the Planning Commission, too, for their extra effort. So with that, I'll close the public hearing. A motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 25, 2011, an ordinance approving a request for a planned commercial development, specific outline development plan for a property located at 7495 West 29th Avenue on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication with the following condition: The applicant continue working with Public Works to resolve the drainage design issues on the site.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang and Demott. Discussion on the main motion. Please, Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I'd just like to say at this time that if this passes, we would like to welcome you to Wheat Ridge. I think you're going to be good for Wheat Ridge. I think Wheat Ridge is going to be good for you. And I was extremely pleased that staff worked it out where we do not have to open up 30th Avenue for the people on Webster, and I think that's very good. I think it showed thought to the process, and I'm extremely pleased that it's not going to open up over there.
Please bow to council.
And the motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations. This is the happiest meeting we've had in a long time. So thank you for coming. We're going to take a five-minute break until everybody shuffles out of the room, then we'll come back for item number two. Just a five-minute break, so we have the noise. So thank you for coming. We're going to take a five-minute break until everybody shuffles out of the room, and we'll come back for item number two. Just a five-minute break, so we have the noise. Twenty-four dash 2011. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Reinhart?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 24-2011, an ordinance concerning the appeals from the decision of the Director of Public Works. The issue is that an ordinance is providing for the right of appeal for the board adjustments for certain decisions of the Public Works Director in repealing obsolete provisions of Chapter 13 in connection therewith. In prior study sessions, we discussed this. The city attorney and the Public Works Director, with myself and Councilwoman Barry, worked on this ordinance to provide an appeal process. It went to Planning Commission on September 11th and was recommended for approval by a vote of five to zero.
Move on to, the city clerk, please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, actually, Council Bill 24-2011 was previously assigned to ordinance number 1497.
That's right. Don't need to swear anybody in. Do you have any presentation beyond the staff, executive summary from staff?
Other than to say that the particular decisions that can be taken to the Board of Adjustment are those that follow final approval by the Planning Commission and the City Council, whichever is appropriate, so it would be following final approval of a project. If there are subsequent administrative decisions taken by the Public Works Director, it is those that can be appealed to the Board of Adjustment under the hardship standard that's already present in the code.
Okay. Do we have any questions from council, or on staff? Discussion? Mr. Davis?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 24-2011, an ordinance concerning appeals from decisions of the Director of Public Works on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Let me close the public hearing first, and then we have a motion. You want to go ahead and read it again?
I move to approve Council Bill 24-2011, an ordinance concerning appeals from decisions of the Director of Public Works on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Adams. I just thought you wanted to say something great about this, because this has been your baby for the last two years.
I'm still, I'm not done.
Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Oh, thank you. Item three is Council Bill 27-2011. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Jay?
I've got to turn myself on here. Council Bill Number 27-2011, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning annexation of real property to the city. The prior action is it was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission at its September 1, 2001, meeting by a vote of five to zero. Let me give the background. The Wheat Ridge Code of Laws does not currently specify procedures for annexation of property to or de-annexation of property from the city. The proposed ordinance incorporates state statutory procedures and requires council approval by ordinance for any de-annexation.
Does the staff have any comments beyond the executive summary?
No.
Does council have any questions before I close, before I close the public hearing? Ms. Jay?
Actually, I do have a question. Under the Section 261202, it refers to, "No such disconnection shall be initiated or completed unless and until the City Council, acting in its sole and exclusive discretion, adopts an ordinance approving such disconnection." My question is, is that specific to a disconnection or to this ordinance?
Well, no, that would be specific to that particular disconnection. So if a parcel of property was petitioned for disconnection, it would, as the section states, it would follow the statutory procedures, and there are some, for disconnection, but those statutory procedures don't involve council ordinance approving or disapproving, and so...
Okay.
The disconnection would have to also obtain...
This is not, this is not a blanket, so specifically per property?
Oh, no. This ordinance is not, doesn't refer to any specific disconnections in the future, it just sets up the procedure for that.
Okay. All right. I'm comfortable then. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 27-2011, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning annexation of real property to the city on second reading, and take, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Okay, before we poll the council, please assign an ordinance number. City clerk?
Council Bill 27-2011 will be assigned to ordinance number 1500.
Thank you. And we have a motion for approval of item three. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item four is Resolution 27-2011. Councilmember Demont?
Thank you. Resolution Number 27-2011, a resolution authorizing assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a private activity bond allocation of the city of Wheat Ridge pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Ceiling Allocation Act. The city of Wheat Ridge has received an allocation of $1,506,083 for the purpose of issuing private activity bonds in 2011 under the state ceiling imposed by the Tax Reform Act of 1987. Staff recommends assigning the city's allocation to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority for the purposes of providing affordable for-sale housing, affordable rental housing development, or economic development. Is a motion in order?
Mr. Dahl?
Mr. Mayor, this was noticed as a public hearing, primarily because when these have come up in the past, it's a kind of a pro forma action that council takes, but we have noticed it always as a pattern, tradition, on these, this particular assignment each time it's come up. So we did send out a notice of public hearing, and I don't know if there's anyone here tonight for that, but if you'd open a public hearing and ask if there's any testimony.
I'm going to open a, open a public hearing for item number four. Is there anybody here from the public who'd like to speak on item number four, besides our current staff? Any comments?
No further comments from staff.
Council, do you have any questions or comments before I close the public hearing? Ms. Langworthy?
I just have a quick question, because we, we assigned this over to CHAF. What would happen if CHAF had, if CHAF didn't want them, because I understand the bond market's not at its best right now? What happens to the money if we don't, if they don't take it?
The other option would be to assign it back to the statewide balance, and then anybody could apply for them through that statewide balance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve the assignment of allocation between the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority and the city of Wheat Ridge, and to adopt Resolution 27-2011, authorizing assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a private activity bond allocation of the city of Wheat Ridge pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Ceiling Allocation Act in the amount of $1,506,083, thereby designating the city's PAB allocation to CHAF for the purpose of providing single-family mortgage loans to low and moderate-income persons and families.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item four, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item five, Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce a motion to approve payment to inside public sector in the amount of $51,618.51 for the annual renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. This is a scheduled, budgeted, and licensed replacement of obsolete Microsoft software at all sites and the support and maintenance that is inherent with upgrades or new software. The annual renewal of licensing and support will cost $51,618.51, which has been approved in the 2011 IT budget. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve payment to inside public sector in the amount of $51,618.51 for the annual renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item five, seconded by Councilmember Reinhart. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six is Resolution 29-2011. Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 29-2011, a resolution approving a right-of-way purchase, maintenance, and access agreement with Burman Panda King, and amending the fiscal year 2011 capital investment program fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $42,221 for the purchase of the right-of-way. Purchase of a right-of-way for the widening of 44th Avenue and the construction of Vance Street south of 44th Avenue. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 29-2011, a resolution approving a right-of-way purchase, maintenance, and access agreement with Mr. Burman of Panda King, and amending the fiscal year 2011 capital investment program fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $42,211 for the purchase of the right-of-way and estimated closing cost, in form of approved by the city attorney.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. There's a, the item says 42,221, and the motion has 42,211. Which one is correct?
I'm not sure. Let me look.
Still want to be $10 short.
So then we'll only spend what we need.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Forty-two to eleven.
Eleven?
Or forty-two, forty-two to twenty-one.
So, Sang, you okay with that amendment? It'd be 42,221?
Okay.
Instead of 211. Okay, we had a motion. It was seconded by Councilmember Reinhart. Discussion on this main motion? And it's going to be 42,221 is the motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is Resolution 28-2011. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 28-2012, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2011 police investigation seizure fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $9,250 for the addition of supplemental cabinetry for the police training room. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 28-2011, a resolution amending fiscal year 2011 police investigation seizure fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $9,250 for the purchase and installation of additional cabinetry.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, was seconded by Councilmember Reinhart. Discussion on item seven? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I would like to make sure the public knows that the 2012 proposed budget is, has been completed and available for review. You can find it on the city's website or here at City Hall. I'd like to thank Heather Guyer and staff for getting that out. We do have a public hearing scheduled for September 26th, and adoption scheduled for October 10th. Would also like to thank Weston Solutions. Weston Solutions is the master developer who is currently working on our project at, urban renewal project at 44th and Wadsworth. They were in town this last Friday for a giving-back event that they do. Their local office did a, they do this on an annual basis in the communities they work in. They worked at our Fruitdale School that the Housing Authority purchased. They helped clean that school up to get it ready for, for whatever it's going to turn into in the future. So I'd like to thank Weston Solutions and the staff that helped out on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerks' matters?
Yes. A couple things, everybody's certainly aware, election season is upon us, and this is a mail ballot, all-mail ballot election, which means if you are registered to vote, and different from previous years, that means if you are an active or an inactive voter, you will receive a ballot in the mail. You may register up until, I believe it's October 3rd. I should have got that date before I came here. You may do so, you can come into the city clerk's office. We have the papers, the forms to do that here, or you can do that online with the JFCO elections. And there's numerous other places to do that. You can go to your motor vehicles offices, and I think that's it, actually. Let's see. And then also, as we do every year, the Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods Election Forum is also upcoming, and I encourage all of our citizens to watch. You can actually come and watch in person. That's going to be on September 29th, 7:00 p.m., here in the council chambers. That is televised live on the Government Access Channel Eight, so you might watch that there. If you miss it, you can watch when it's rebroadcast. Usually every day it's broadcast on a schedule that will be set, and you can watch parts of that. You'll get to hear some questions and answer from our candidates, all those for clerk, treasurer, and the council seats, as well of, as well as all of the school board candidates, and speakers for and against the city's referred measure, as well as one statewide ballot measure that's been initiated. The last thing is, this year has a bit of a participatory element to it. We are encouraging citizens, and council, and future council, and anybody, really, to submit questions that they might like to see posed to our council and clerk and treasurer candidates at the forum. That collection of questions will be, from that, we'll select the best 10, and we'll publish those ahead of time, so that everybody's aware of what, what questions will come up. And then there'll be a random drawing of questions at the forum, so our candidates aren't quite prepared, but they have a little bit of surprise. So please, if you have questions you'd like to pose, you may send those to wrn@googlegroups.com, and you can find a link to that as well from the calendar event on the city's website, or you can contact the clerk's office for more information. Please participate, and please vote. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Langworthy?
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stites?
Oh, yeah. As I drive around town, especially this fall, I see a lot of dumpsters and a lot of people doing work, and I think that's absolutely fantastic. I thank you, the city thanks you, but I do see a lot of homework, or a lot of home work going on, and a lot of landscaping and stuff like that, and this is the time to do it. This is an excellent time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, contact staff or one of us, and we'd be glad to help you. Please try to do a positive thing, either for your family, your neighborhood, your school, or whatever. There's a lot of people out there that need help, and try to seek them out. You know, sometimes they don't know how to get help, but it might be a simple thing that you could do in your neighborhood, check on your neighbors, and see if they're okay. It's the only way to do it, and as always, please try to find it, and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Jay?
We have the mid-century and modern home tour coming up, and Wheat Ridge has a wonderful sprinkling of what's called mid-century modern homes. We have a lot of '50s homes, but in that era, some of them were built very contemporary, very modern, they were called modern at that time, and we're having a home show of those. Wheat Ridge 2020 is one of the sponsors of that. They're really putting it together, and that will be September 24th. It's sort of a midday thing. Information can be through 2020, as well as through Mod Mood. And I'm excited about it. I think we will all get quite a kick out of seeing some of these beautiful homes, some of which have, are all in the '50s era, and some are more of a mixture of today and, and the '50s, but they're all very classy and wonderful. They have chosen some of the top homes to look at, so this is a tour, as they say, not to be missed. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Demont?
Thank you. Yeah, I do. I know we had a lot of... I know we had a lot of hubbub and a lot of things going on with the Carnation Festival, and I just wanted to mention one thing that I found to be inspirational and interesting about the Carnation Festival this year. Every year we have, along with all the traditions we have, they have a blue versus gray softball team where the Weavers Police Department takes on the Silver Foxes softball team. And, you know, I heard from a couple of people at the restaurant that they didn't finish the softball game, and that was about all we ever heard about it. So as I started researching why they didn't finish the softball game, I realized that that night, a lot of what we heard about was that there was a missing child in Wheat Ridge. And we heard about it all night long on TV, but what you didn't hear on the news was, this kind of chokes me up, actually, when I talk about it. It was a pretty impressive thing. When the call went out for help for the missing child to the police department, the off-duty officers playing softball left the game to go look for that child. And, you know, they're not bragging about it, and they're not asking for any kind of recognition about it. I just felt that it was, with all the excitement and fun that we talk about, as a parent and a citizen, I feel that it really demonstrates that our police department truly lives up to their core values and their mission statement. I'll try to get it right. Their mission statement is providing the highest standards of service in partnership with the community. I'd like to give a nod to them and a thank, a thank you to them and especially their families for giving up their nights and their weekends and even their softball games for us. And I say that from the bottom of my heart as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sang? Ms. Adams?
Thank you. I want to remind our citizens that this weekend is the infamous Farmers 5,000, and they'll be having a race through our city, and you can still sign up to do that, and the funds go to different programs at our high school. It's been an ongoing tradition. It's early in the morning, so if you want to also go over to the second wind race, you can do that. And so Sunday morning, I would ask our citizens to please continue to support our high school for the Farmers 5,000 race. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I intend to have very sore legs from running in the Farmer 5,000 on Sunday morning, and then I have to go play a soccer game after that, so I'm doing that. But on sort of two increasingly serious notes, I would like to say that I'm, I think it's a good statement about the community that we have so many willing candidates in the community out to put themselves in front of the citizenry to choose and help, you know, study and make good decisions. And hopefully we'll be getting some new voices and some new ideas on council because of the terming out of a number of our members who we will miss. And then, after listening to Joey choke up a little bit about the police, I want to say that I'd hate to see today go by without any mention of it being 9/12. And, you know, I went to some, saw a number of events yesterday on the TV and so forth, and actually broke up the game I was in. We took a moment of silence in the sports event I was participating in. And, you know, I mean, it's a long way from looking for a child to running into a burning building, but these are the same people, and they're service to all our communities. I think we need to remember our 9/11, 9/12, 9/13, and on. So I think it's important to remember that one. So thank you.
Thank you. I've received a few phone calls from folks about candidates, and they're wondering who's running in their district. There's signs in different districts and different locations, and of course, that's legal. But what I wanted to do was just run down the website and mention all the candidates. People will know who they are and where they are running. And I'm going to run it off the website rather than the ballot questions. But in District One, which is District One, which is near City Hall, it's Jesse Hill, William Budstarker, Karen Kay Thaler, and Monica I. Duran, and that's District One. So those folks are running in District One. In District Two, it's Zach Urban, Kristy Davis, Lily Grego, and George Vandania. Those are candidates for District Two, which is north of 38th Avenue. And then for District Three, we have George Pond, who is unopposed. And District Four, we have Tracy F. Gilner and Tracy Lee and Langworthy. That's District Four. It's basically west and north of 38th Avenue, west of Wadsworth, actually west of Dover. And then for City Clerk, we have Leah Dozeman, Lenny Ortiz, Janelle Shaver, and Maureen Keller. That's a district or citywide race, so those four people are running citywide. So you could see information about them all over the city. And then for City Treasurer, we have Larry Schultz and Dick Matthews. So that's the two at-large seats, City Clerk and City Treasurer. So please look up the information that you need to know to see what district you're in, because it is confusing with information coming out from all different sites. So I have to agree with Mr. Reinhardt and Mr. Demont about our police department. They've done a great job. They've been nationally accredited. We can't say it enough that that's only 10% of the police departments nationwide have been nationally accredited, and it started in 2005. So it's a great job with our police department, our city staff, and council supporting that effort through the last five, four years. So congratulations to them again. And with that, we will adjourn.